I'd like to call the November 14th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting into session. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Pastor Greg Vick, who is the pastor at Stewart's Creek Church Christ, who is our minister of the day. Pastor Vick, if you would please come forward to the well and offer us in prayer.
You bow with me. Our Father, our Creator, our Lord in God, we come to you tonight humbly before your throne of grace and of mercy, and we just thank you for all that you've given us, the lives that we've been blessed with, this area in which we live. We're just so grateful for all of our blessings. Special prayers tonight, dear Lord, for this meeting as these commissioners have come together and are trying to make decisions that are best for this community. We pray for the people who live here, our children, as these plans will make preparation for the place that they're going to live in the future. We pray, Lord, that not only with the decisions that are made here, but all that we do as citizens here of Rutherford County, of this state, of this country, we strive to build a better place in the future than we've had in the past, and that we always struggle and strive to go over, overcome evil with good, to guide our young people in a direction to help them see what is best for their future, so that they can become the citizens that this country needs. We pray, Lord, not only for this commission, but for our state government, our federal government. We pray in this time where there seems to be much division, that something can come to light to help reunify us, to help us to be the great nation that we truly can and should be. We pray also, Lord, for this time period as we're entering into a time of holidays, many people rejoicing and enjoying this time, and yet we do know that there are many that are hurting. At a time where they may be spending the holidays for the first time without loved ones, maybe for loss, we pray that you be with them and that they turn to you. We know especially as the bond to family has received such heartbreaking news, we just pray that you bring peace and comfort in a way that in matter only you can do. And we pray that you use each one of us as adults to look around about us and find ways to make our community a better place, to make Rutherford County something that not only we are proud of, but our children can look back in time and say, "Our parents did well." And, Lord, we pray that you'll bless those that need you, be with those that are struggling, and help us through this holiday season without being selfish or greedy, but to show love, compassion, and share all that we have with those that are in need. We pray for our schools, the administrators, all who are working for that future. We pray that you guide them as well. We pray you will forgive us, Lord, our many sins. Help us to be the people that you know we can be. Guard, guide, and direct us, and it's in your son's holy name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Vick comes to us from, as I said, Stewart's Creek Church Christ. He touches three of our commissioners, matter of fact. Commissioner Cook is a member of his congregation in Stewart's Creek. I believe he lives in Commissioner Gooch's district in Blackman. And then Commissioner Reed, he teaches at Rockville Middle School, so he's quite the man about town, so we certainly appreciate him coming. At this point in time, I'd like to call on our chaplain, Steve Irwin, who will lead us in pledge of allegiance to the American flag and then to the flag of the state of Tennessee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Through white stars on a field of blue, God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
He may be seated. We will call Madam Clerk. Commissioner Jernigan, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Jernigan's here.
Okay. We have a quorum, 21 present.
We have a quorum, and we'll proceed to conduct our business. At this point in time, we'll go to item E, reading and approval of the minutes. Speaker Pro Tem Phillips.
Mayor Katrin, I reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order. I move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Before we get into public comments, I would like to take a moment of privilege to introduce our newest member of Rutherford County's team. Cody, if you would please come up and just let all the commission and our visitors on TV and in the audience tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Cody York. Cody is our new director of IT. Cody's background is, for the last 12 years, he's been a director of the Secretary of State's Office in Nashville, Tennessee. He comes with a lot of experience, lives in, used to live in Blackman, but now he lives in Rockville. Commissioner Reed with his four children, another voter, eh? And actually, he's an ordained minister. So we're excited about having Cody onboard and looking forward to him directing our team and taking care of IT. Any comments?
I just look forward to working for the wonderful county that I live in and hope to serve the people here well.
All right. Thank you, Cody. Next on the agenda, we'll get into public comments. It's time for our public comments section. We have four citizens signed up to speak tonight. I ask that you come forward when I call your name, and if you would, come to the well, give your name and address, and you'll be timed. Please keep your comments to three minutes. First on the agenda, we have Mr. Brad Hornsby. He wants to talk about an article in the D N J. Mr. Hornsby, you're recognized in the well.
How many of you? Brad Hornsby, 1419 Veranda Circle, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I came to ask some legitimate questions of our county mayor. Mr. Transparency, that's his words, not mine. It is a shame when every time I turn on the paper, I see negative comments coming from the D N J about him and others. He works for us, and he should be held accountable. If he'll not answer my questions, I would request the commission ask these questions. Copies are available. Number one, it has been alleged that you forced out numerous older employees at EMS. Did you threaten to fire them, and if so, why? I wonder how much the county's going to have to pay on that lawsuit. Have you made similar threats against any other incumbent employers over the age of 50 or females to get them to resign? We may have other lawsuits coming. As for the recent hiring of Steve Irwin, what criteria did you use to hire him over females with degrees, experience, and impeccable records? I know he's a commissioner, but this decision seems insensuous, and I wonder how much we're going to have to pay for that lawsuit. Did you do any independent investigation when he subsequently fired the person who applied for the job? Did you ask commissioner to resign, given his employment and his position on the commission? As for a recent complaint against Ms. Stevens and Robert Stevens, I'd like to know if you had anything to do with besmirching an elected official and having to do what appears to be a frivolous complaint filed against her. A forensic handwriting expert has determined that Rob Mitchell's son partially prepared that complaint. That should give you some concern, because Robert Mitchell was then in possession of that complaint, according to the filings, and forwarded it to others before it was even filed. As commissioners, it should concern you that our county mayor and other elected officials might be behind complaints against a fellow commissioner, Mr. Stevens, solely because he had the audacity to ask similar questions that I'm asking. Did he personally sign any forms seeking double reimbursement from the state of Tennessee and for his campaign funds? Got caught twice, making, getting the same expenditures paid up only when he got caught. I can only assume one of three conclusions: he improperly took the money, two, he's incompetent, or three, he's too busy. In any event, I really question whether he should be handling the county's mayor. Think about that, double payment, sounds like theft. Did you receive, did you not receive numerous notices from the election commission? They send out notices when you don't file, yet he never filed any complaints, any reports that are due. Mr. Liggett, to take up the rest of my time, since apparently I'm limited to three minutes. Did I assume that was my three minutes, sir?
I'm sorry.
Was that the buzz in the three minutes?
No. Was that three minutes?
Okay.
Your time is up. I'm...
That's right. This is Liggett. Go ahead. According to Robert's Rules of Order, I'd like to cede my time.
Well, go, please go, please go ahead. Usually, I think our rules have been, Mr. Liggett, in the past, that you have to call prior to the meeting and get on to the agenda, but if, that's fine with me. I'll make that ruling. You can go ahead and take up, I'm sorry.
My time?
Yeah, cede your time.
Number nine now. Did the mayor improperly use state campaign funds for his run for county mayor? Number 10, did you have discussions with Tom Lawless or anyone else, either directly or indirectly, to get the civil penalties assessed against you dismissed? Number 11, we may or may not be aware, subpoena has been issued. Is he going to honor the subpoena of the Registry of Election Finance and turn over his credit card statements, his bank account statements, both personal and business, and he's going to turn it over to us, the taxpayers, to know what he did with the money? 12, when did you discover that your daughter, who's running your business and placed thereby you, did not have an insurance license? Number 13, when did you first find out your daughter was allegedly stealing from you? Number 14, when did you really stop working at your insurance company? He's running an insurance company, someone without a license is actually supposedly running it. 15, was any money stolen by your daughter placed into the insurance company account, and did you withdraw any of it? In essence, did you take any money that was stolen? Are you willing to open up the books for this county to look at? When did you first find out that your daughter was allegedly taking money from customers for insurance and not putting any insurance in effect? 17, how many incidents were you aware of before the indictment? How many are you aware of today? Are you not concerned about your company being investigated, people paying for insurance and not getting it? You should be, everyone here should be. Did you read the deposition of your daughter, where she purportedly made numerous false statements? Who paid Neil and Harwell for the representation of your daughter? I don't have a problem with a good attorney getting hired, but it does concern me if someone else paid for those, for that representation. When did you find out your daughter was stealing from your campaign fund? Do you intend to reimburse the campaign fund in your insurance company for the thefts? If you're not going to answer these questions, I would like to know if you'll do the honorable thing and resign. Mr. Katrin was elected to represent us and is accountable to us. These are pertinent questions that need to be asked. It wasn't that long ago when we had a sheriff in this county that was causing a huge stench throughout the county, and this county didn't look good. Doesn't look good now. This might be the time of resignation is appropriate. He can take care of his family insurance business, he can take care of his daughter, who probably really needs his support, but all of this just causes too much of a stench on our county. I don't think anybody in here likes the fact that Rutherford County is on a constant article paper about negative news stories. I heard the words "quid pro quo" and "drain the swamp" being thrown around in Washington, DC. Unfortunately, it applies down here in this county now, it seems. I suggest this county commission, along with District Attorney General, investigate.
Next, we have Diane Parker. Diane Parker is going to talk about solid waste. Please state your name and address, Ms. Parker.
Okay, sure. I'm Diane Parker. I live at 2101 Wimbledon Drive in Murfreesboro, and I'm going to talk about, not talk trash, talk about trash. I am pretty much a lifelong resident of Rutherford County, along with my father. He was a member of Ketchikan Volunteer Fire Department. My grandfather was a judge, circuit court judge in Rutherford County, John D. Wiseman. I'm a member of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, along with my father, who was, and the RNA, along with many other organizations, are concerned about how we deal with the trash in this county. We know it's a major concern for you all as well. In our discussion, we found it helps to focus on one point, and that point is what we don't want. We think that if you can develop a list of what you don't want, that might clarify some of your problems and focus on your goals. When we know what we don't want, we can move on to focus what you do want. There are three items that are on our don't-want list. One, we don't want our trash to poison us. Number two, we don't want our trash to bankrupt us. Number three, we're in the 21st century. We don't want trash solutions that belong in the Stone Age, such as burying the trash. That's what our ancestors did when they lived in caves. Doesn't seem to be the most innovative solution for Rutherford County. We want Rutherford County to be innovative. Our trash problem in Rutherford County is all of our problems. What about recycling? I don't think there's been enough talk about that. We know that the, we know that you all are working on this. We hope that a clear don't-want list will clarify what will work. So if you're clear about what you don't want, then you can move on to what you do want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Next, we have Mr. Steve Barman, talk about solid waste. Steve?
I'm Steve Baughman. I live at 315 North Manny. Also, I'm a member of the RNA, been a citizen here, moved to Murfreesboro in 76. My folks moved in 72. Again, on the do not, I do not want this to be a toxic community from the solid waste, and this is a personal issue for me. My youngest daughter was a year old when we moved here, and she developed leukemia when she was seven years old. I lived on Ewing, she played at campus school, and there was a number of people in that area that developed leukemia. We found out about that while she's going through treatment at Vanderbilt. And one of the nurses, after a couple of years, you know, you get a personal relationship with them, said, "Oh, you know, there's a whole, there's an abnormal amount of cancer cases coming from your area code, 37130." That's the way it was. We've lived with that for years. Come to find out, when I was looking in 19, excuse me, in 2016, they did a cancer study and mapped out the whole United States. That area of Murfreesboro, on a scale of one to 10, rates number nine for lead contamination. We have a number of friends, some of you knew the Sklars, Roger Sklar passed away, has a tree planted at campus school, but that area is toxic. We just learned about it recently. Now, what really got me upset is Joy Hoard and I became close friends. She has a granddaughter, Teddy Ann. They were in kindergarten together a couple of years ago, and Teddy Ann and my grandson decided they were going to get married when they get old enough. The bonds begin to grow with the community. Joy's Hoard is one of the oldest community, one of the founding families of Murfreesboro. Her house is 185 years old. So we're tutoring at McFadden, and Joy and I developed a close bond. My first forum on solid waste was April 9th. On the 11th, there's a spill onto her property, and, oh, it's just a couple thousand gallons. She didn't find out about it till one of her cattle's die, one of her cows die from drinking out of the pond. Oh, it'll clear up. Further investigation, 440,000 gallons of affluent was dropped on her farm from the water treatment plant. There was no disaster plan. City wouldn't help her put up a fence, wouldn't bring water out for her cattle, and, you know, she's upset. I don't want my grandson and his good new girlfriend growing up in a toxic community. So I've talked to several commissioners, I've been going to the, I'm sorry, I get emotional on this, been going to the meetings on Wednesdays, Public Works and Solid Waste, several of you I've talked to, Citizens Group, that's what Waste Alliance is. I formed Waste Alliance, we have several other members. Sorry. It's the group. It's legitimate now, websites, website's being developed. That's what we see. It's the Citizens Group being formed now.
Thank you, Mr. Barman. Next, we have Mr. Rick Davis, want to talk about the landfill. Mr. Davis, please state your name and your address, please, sir.
Hi, I'm Rick Davis, 5205 Stonewood Drive out in Emmett Heights. Came today to talk about some of my ideas that I had about the landfill site. I'm a former Air Force pilot, and the Air Force has got some pretty good technology on how we turn trash into jet fuel, and I thought that might be a proposal that you guys know about and that we take a look at, but what I, for most of my minutes, I'm going to change my mind about talking about that. Because today, sitting back there, is one of the saddest days that I've ever seen in the history of Rutherford County as far as politics. I know Brad, and I know Bill. Brad and I were fraternity brothers in college. We serve on the election committee, appointment committee for Oakland High School Football Hall of Fame. Bill and I go back before government cheese, I guess, but it's pretty sad when you come before a committee like this or in the newspaper, you hold court, when we have courtrooms to hold that court, and it's disturbing to me. Brad and I kind of took a little oath when we were in college fraternity to conduct ourselves as gentlemen, so this is my best attempt at it, but, but, you know, when you start attacking somebody's child in Rutherford County, I've got to stand between them. That's not appropriate. We're here to raise our children and to better our children if they make mistakes. We're here to help them not ruin their lives at such a young age. Dear friend of mine that y'all probably know, Mr. Myers Parsons, who recently passed away. I grew up in Westview, used to walk to Crichlough School every day. Every Friday, went right by the sale barn, and a lot of times I didn't make it to school because Mr. Parsons would flip me a quarter, and lay back in, a quarter was a bunch of money. And I'd pin cows and bulls up against the fence, and he'd look at them, and he always told me, said, "Before you buy that bull, look close at both ends and make sure everything's working in the middle." So I believe, Brad, I believe you're showing one side of the bull at your auction partner, and I just got to disagree with you, stand up publicly. You've asked the mayor to resign, I'm going to ask him to stay. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next, we have election and confirmations. Call on Chairman Pettis Reed. Chairman Reed, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you have received, in fact, on your iPad right now, you have a list of the notaries that are available to be nominated this evening. Mr. Chairman, I move to elect the list of applicants for notaries in Rutherford County. I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Meeting of discussion. Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to confirm the appointment of Kevin Laura to Emergency Communications District Board, 9/11 term to expire November 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to re, the re-announcement of one vacancy for the Beer Board alternate. Term the appointment of Gerald Higgins as Judicial Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to re, the re-announcement of one vacancy for the Beer Board alternate. Term the appointment of Gerald Higgins as Judicial Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to announce four vacancies for the Agricultural Advisory Board. Phyllis Ferguson, Colin Miller, Commissioner Joe Gurley, and Commissioner Ashanto Serino terms to expire December 2019. Steering wishes to announce two vacancies for Correctional Works Center Board. Robert Asbury, Francis Mosby, terms to expire January 2020. Steering wishes to announce four vacancies for the Public Building Authority. Jimmy Davis, Blake Smith, Jim Bailey, and Stan Vaul, terms to expire January 2020. Steering wishes to confirm the appointment of Lenise Roan Patrick to the C U D Board, term to expire November 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to re, the re-announcement of one vacancy for the Beer Board alternate. Term the appointment of Gerald Higgins as Judicial Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to announce four vacancies for the Agricultural Advisory Board. Phyllis Ferguson, Colin Miller, Commissioner Joe Gurley, and Commissioner Ashanto Serino terms to expire December 2019. Steering wishes to announce two vacancies for Correctional Works Center Board. Robert Asbury, Francis Mosby, terms to expire January 2020. Steering wishes to announce four vacancies for the Public Building Authority. Jimmy Davis, Blake Smith, Jim Bailey, and Stan Vaul, terms to expire January 2020. Steering wishes to confirm the appointment of Lenise Roan Patrick to the C U D Board, term to expire November 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any, any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. I like Chairman Reed. Next, we have the resolution to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Katrin. That consent agenda, I find it to be appropriate, and I move that the consent agenda be adopted and approved as presented.
Are there any questions? Is there a second? And a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that item number six be taken off the consent agenda and be voted on separately. That's the flood mitigation grant application.
Item, item number 16 is, six? Flood mitigation grant? Is that correct? Okay. To be bumped off, to be voted on separately. Is there a second? Got a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay. Back on the consent agenda, minus number six. We'll be on the, any questions, further questions on that? We'll be on the board, please. Yes, sir. Commissioner Gooch.
Could we just have a brief explanation of number 16? The resolution to adopt the media policy?
We can. I believe our P I O, our M P I O is here. We may, we're two minutes away from going into public hearing. Ashley, come on up and, come on to the well, if you would, and give a brief explanation before we get into the public hearing. That's Ashley McDonald, our master public information officer.
Is there something specifically that I can address that's given question?
Well, I apologize, maybe I didn't do my homework, but as far as elected officials, what's in there for us and what are we allowed to do, not allowed to do? Just if you could cover that, please.
It's not telling you that you have to do any certain thing. It's meant to give structure to the public information dissemination for the county. In that document where it says elected officials, it's more so talking about constitutional officers, but that offer is standing to the commissioners also. If you get a call from the media and you feel kind of uneasy about it, you know, you are more than welcome to call and consult me and let, come up with a strategy. Anybody else?
But there's nothing in here to suggest that if the media contacts us, we're free to address the media and comment and make statements and... free to address the media and comment and make statements and answer questions.
Basically, the way that the policy is written, it, it asks if something could have negative implications or could reflect negatively upon the county, that we just have a heads up, but that doesn't mean that you have to consult me every time that you're going to have. It's not to micromanage anything and not to keep you from talking to the media.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, before we get to number six, we'll go ahead and we'll be on the board for the consent agenda, minus item number six, members. Without any other questions, you're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Board to vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Motion passes. Now it's time to come into our public hearing. I'll call on our, it's 6:30. I'll call on our County Planning Director, Mr. Doug Demossi. Mr. Demossi, you're recognized.
Yes, Mayor Ketchum. Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor Ketchum and members of the commission. Before I get into the one rezoning case we have tonight, I just wanted to make one quick announcement regarding one of the other cases that was supposed to have been presented tonight. This was for property located along Cut Off Road in Lebanon Pike. Light Cothran was the applicant. They pulled that particular application from this agenda this past, just two days ago on Tuesday. We tried to get the word out as best we could, but in the event that there are some folks in the audience who did come anticipation of that, I just wanted to let you know that that will not be considered tonight. So with that, I'll go ahead and get into the one rezoning request tonight, and then I will call on our engineer, Mike Hughes, to discuss some changes to the Rutherford County Stormwater Management Ordinance. The one rezoning we do have tonight is by Mr. Keith Barrett. This is for property located at 3316 West Jefferson Pike. Mr. Barrett is asking for commercial services zoning on this property, which is currently zoned residential medium density. According to application, I'm sorry, information provided by the applicant, he would like to rezonate a portion of this property in order to operate his landscaping company. He wants to construct a 3,000-square-foot building for material and equipment storage. He would have trucks and trailers on the property, and his hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday from 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Most of the traffic would occur during the first and last half-hours of each workday. Basically, employees coming to pick up their materials, heading out to their job sites, and then returning, and then getting their vehicles and going home. So very little activity is contemplated during the actual workday. The applicant has actually been in business at this location for several years. He came into the Planning and Engineering Department in order to begin the process of obtaining a building permit for the proposed structure he wanted to build. That was when we discovered that there was actually a business on the property, so we hadn't received any complaints regarding it. The applicant was counseled at that time to make an application for rezoning for either the entire property or a portion, which is what he has done. Access to the property would continue to be along West Jefferson Pike. There's an existing gravel drive that would access the business toward the back of the property. You can see a copy of the concept plan that he included with his agenda materials located on your iPads. Of course, if this is rezoned, any new buildings, parking areas, whatnot, would have to be built to county standards, and that would have to be shown to staff via a engineered site plan. Landscaping would also have to be provided, buffering adjacent to any residentially zoned properties, and our performance standards would also apply to this site. There were questions about the layout of the property at the Planning Commission's meeting, what portions of the property he would use for the business, and the fact that a site plan would be required. There were some questions as to why he was only asking for a portion of the property. He stated that his parents own the property and only wanted the minimum amount that he needed to actually be zoned. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request by a unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi from the commissioners? Any questions? I call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name, address, whether you're for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed, and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Ketchum, I move for its appro, with its approval.
I have a motion for approval. Is there a second? And a second? Any questions or discussion? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, with your permission, Mayor Ketchum, Mr. Mike Hughes, our county engineer, will do the second public hearing.
Michael Hughes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, commissioners. Earlier this year, August of this year, I should say, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation performed an audit of our stormwater program, and although we passed with flying colors, they did recommend some stormwater ordinance revisions to our, our standing policy. And on your iPad, you'll find our stormwater ordinance under the Public Hearing section. The first one is on page 2-2, and essentially, for construction sites on receiving streams with unavailable, or what's formerly called impaired waters or high-quality waters, they wanted to require a minimum of a 30-foot construction buffer in our ordinance. Previously, we had 25 feet from one of T-Dax's previous ordinances, and they just wanted us to match what they had in their ordinance this, at the current time. The next one is on page 2-5, and they wanted us to have a definition added to our list of definitions for a priority site. And a priority site is any site that discharges directly to a stream with unavailable, impaired waters, or exceptional waters. We, as a policy, treated every site as a priority site, so we, we felt we didn't need it, but they thought we needed to go ahead and include that in our definitions, and we didn't have a problem with that. So, the next one is on page 4-3, and also for sites draining to, with receiving streams of impaired waterways or exceptional waters, they wanted us to change our sediment basin requirement. A sediment basin is just a place that, that stormwater collects and lets the sediment drop out. And it went from 10 acres, 10 acres or more to five acres or more, and it changed from a smaller storm, a two-year, 24-hour storm, to a five-year, 24-hour storm event. Just a little bit stricter requirement for our sediment basins. And then the fourth and final one was to add a stream buffer sign. Now, stream buffers are required on any county development on a receiving stream with one acre or, or more is a 60-foot buffer. Less than one acre on a named stream is 30 acres or more. And what we would like to do would add a, a small sign saying this is a stream buffer, it needs to stay a natural vegetated state, and we've, most of our water quality from these buffers come from filtering the water as it runs through the vegetation. It helps cool the streams as, as they shade the streams during the summer months, and it also provides habitat for, for life, aquatic and, and other life. These, these ordinance changes were first approved through our Stormwater Advisory Committee, next through our Planning Commission, and then went through the Planning and Public Works Subcommittee. And I'll try to, happy, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any, any questions for Mr. Hughes, from the commission? Seeing none, I will call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name and address, and whether you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. The Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion on acceptance? Have a motion for approval. Is there a second? And a second? Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have reports by standing committees. First, we have budget. Thank you, number six. We will go back to the item number six that was, that was bumped off of the consent agenda. So now, we'll put the application for flood mitigation grant for emergency management before us. Chairman, you're recognized.
Thank you. In case you wondered about this thick book here, this has got all the agenda items for our meeting tonight, and there's several of these, there's 60-plus pages, and I just happen to have number six in this book, so I'll go ahead and read this. What, what it is, is giving us permission to apply for a grant. If that grant is awarded, and we don't know that it will be, and also, we don't know the number of people that would actually apply, then this would actually come back to us. So just to let you know a little history of it, it did pass through the commission, but not unanimously, or, excuse me, through the Budget Committee, but not unanimously. And I'll read this resolution. Whereas the Rutherford County Emergency Management Agency has made, was made aware of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Federal Emergency Management Agency to buy out property that has been impacted by flooding and desires to submit an application for the grant. And whereas seven property owners have expressed interest in participating in the program with total cost estimated to be $2,466,409.27, with a county match requirement of 12.5% or up to $308,301.16. And whereas if said grant is awarded and accepted for the property owners that choose to participate, the county would demolish the homes and the property would not be able to be built upon again. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, resolved this 14th day of November 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Discussion, questions? Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, I don't know about all these properties, but I do know about one particular property that, I believe it's in Commissioner Irwin's district, but I went out and, and looked at it, and I know that Mr. Brooks and Mr. Hughes have gone out and looked at it and looked at, looked at alternatives. They've really looked at all kinds of alternatives in this particular piece of property. This particular piece of property should never have been approved. It dropped through the cracks. In my opinion, the homeowners probably have a pretty good lawsuit against the county. That's my opinion. The, you know, we did several of these after the 2010 flood, and there are properties that probably never should have been built on, but some way I know that they got through the planning process. This property was built only five or six years ago, and exactly how it got through, I'm not quite sure, but it got through. And I, I think this, anytime we can get the federal government to pay a significant portion of the cost of mitigating these homes for people that are constantly flooded, and I'm not, not talking about a 2010 flood, I'm talking about a two or three-inch rain, a two-inch rain, and they're, they're, they can't live in their house. So I would urge you to consider this. It's a good thing. Yes, we will have to spend a little bit of money, but it's, it's good in the long run. And some of this land can be used. This particular parcel that I'm aware of would be an excellent retention pond for the rest of the neighborhood, which was built in the 80s. It would be an excellent retention pond. Some of the other properties can be used for green space, et cetera. So please think about this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Harris.
We talked about this in Public Works, and to my understanding, the state will pay 12%, and we'll pay 12%, and then this grant will pay the rest. So the only thing that I'm concerned, I think, I think it's a good idea, but what I am concerned with is how do we budget this? I mean, the tank says 20 houses. We got seven approved, but if 20 people take it, that's a huge, huge impact to us. And so my question is, how are we going to budget? Are we going to have like a open line on this on a budget, or? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mr. Noah.
We typically don't budget this until you know you're awarded, and at that point is when you will make the decision whether, whether to accept the award or not. And at that point, I mean, it's like a three-point thing. One, that we do get it, and then, secondly, that the homeowner still chooses to participate.
I understand, but I'm just saying it's offered to 20 people, like only seven people.
And only seven have.
So you're going to put in the budget 20? Because we really don't know how much it's going to be. Am I correct?
We don't, we don't. And as of right now, only seven have, have expressed interest. So what we're trying to present is, for these seven, is this would potentially be the financial impact to the county, which is 308,000. We won't budget that until the award is accepted, and it comes through this committee again, through the commission again, to make that decision.
Commissioner Dodd.
Also, Commissioner, the seven, the other 13 families chose not to apply, so they're out until at a future time, if FEMA chooses to allow some grant money again, those 13 might join back up. So it can't exceed the seven for this go-round, if that helps any.
Other comments? Chairman Allen.
There was one thing that I did want to mention that goes to Commissioner Gurley's comments, and that is, one of the ways that the federal government saves money is they stop their FEMA, FEMA study, the floodplain study at a certain point. So all of these properties are in flood zone X, which would indicate to us as planners that they are not in a floodplain. So that was part of how this got through.
Other comments? Discussion? I know we're not expending the money right now, but I, I'd feel more comfortable if we just vote on the board, and then if we do get the grant, then we'll vote the second time on the board. So we'll be on the board. Please cast your vote. Mr. Harris.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record to vote, Madam Clerk.
20 yes, one no, motion passes.
We'll move into our standing committees. Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, just keep standing.
All right. The first item, well, actually, we had four items to look at. Item C on your laptops has been removed. We're actually reviewing some of our accounting procedures, and we plan to hear this at our December meeting, so that one is removed. The first one we will be looking at is item A, the Drug Fund Budget Amendment, and I'll read that resolution, item K-1A. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the drug fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Office, increase expenditures, maintenance and repair vehicles, $20,000, a decrease in the restricted fund balance of $20,000, resolved this 14th day of November 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Any discussion or questions? Or on the board? Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes. Motion passes.
Our next item is the Spatial Software and Related General Fund Budget Amendments for the Property Assessor's Office, Resolution K-1B. Whereas the Rutherford County Property Assessor desires to enter into a master software and services agreement with Spatial Incorporated to provide license for software to assist the property assessor with appraisal of property and finding comparable properties. And whereas to the cost to Rutherford County for one year shall be the amount of $62,000. And the cost for year two and beyond shall be the amount of $42,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a master software and service agreement, subject to the approval of the county attorney with Spaces Incorporated. A copy of the same being attached heretofore is Exhibit 1 and Incorporated herein by reference as set forth herein at length verbatim, to provide license for software with a one-year cost of $62,000 and a two-year and beyond cost of $42,000. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to appropriate funds for the software license. Increased expenditures for data processing services, $37,000, and a decrease in our unassigned fund balance of $37,000. Resolved this 14th day of November 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Any discussion or questions? Question? Chairman Allen.
This did not pass unanimously in budget, and I just want to make the point to say, so many times, our constituents always stress, you need to only pay for your needs, not your wants. And this is a really high-tech, impressive software. Many of you on different committees got a chance to see it. So this in no way discounts the effectiveness of this tool. It feels like a want to me, as opposed to a need, and I can't justify the recurring expense of the $42,000 a year. So that was why I voted no in budget.
Other comments? Questions? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also voted no in budget committee. Again, like Commissioner Allen said, a lot of the information and the things that this software does were amazing, but the information is already available to people. You can find this information. It's not as easy as it is if you have this high-tech software, but it's out there. And I just wanted to remind the commission, the last time that we bought software, before an election, it went into a big disaster. So I'm just not sure this is the time to do this.
Commissioner Don.
Yeah, I supported this purchase. The request was for an amount double from this, what we ultimately wished to appropriate. And the components that were going to provide the information that's already out there, we chose not to purchase, is my recollection. So we're purchasing the components of this software that allow the appraisers to be more effective in their job first. And if this software goes well, then perhaps we might choose to add the modules in the future that would provide the information that the commissioner alluded to. So I think that that's a delayed component of that. So I did support this at committee level.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. We'll be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the vote, Madam Clerk.
17 yes, four no. Motion passes.
Our last item, item K-1D, is actually a software services update for juvenile detention. And I'll go ahead and read that. Resolved. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Juvenile detention, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $21,000, and increased expenditures of data processing services of $21,000. Resolved this 14th day of November 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes. Motion passes.
Mr. McAdoo. Commissioner McAdoo.
That's what I made the announcement for, that we'll be seeing that in December, that we're looking at some accounting procedures.
My understanding would come straight back to the full commission.
Do you want to come back to property management? Thank you, Chairman P. Next is item number two, Health and Education Committee, no report. Madam Chairman. Next, we have item number three, Property Management Committee. Chairman McAdoo, you recognize.
Okay, first thing on the property management resolution for transferable of property at Rockyfort Schools to the town of Smyrna. And we have had a lot lengthy discussion on this property, of how it got to property management. So I would like, if it's, with no objections, I would like one that our commissioners are familiar with how we got to this predicament, to give us insight on it. As Commissioner Wayne Blair, that at one time was on the school board, and he's more familiar with how we got to this predicament of transferring this property to Smyrna.
Commissioner Blair, your name's been called, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I talk so seldom, I'm not sure I've ever been. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I was on the school board at the time. Mr. Harry Gere was our director of schools, and there was a request from the town of Smyrna to carve out a portion of that property for a fire station and potentially a police annex. And at that time, the board, to the best of my recollection, voted unanimously to approve that, giving that parcel to the town of Smyrna. What I do not know is how it did not work through the process of being deeded or titled to the town, but it was the intention of the school board at that time that that parcel be carved out for a future fire department and/or police annex.
And it's my understanding in talking to Mr. Hercules and also Mr. Peach, that that is still the intent, to put the fire hall on that parcel of property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to read the resolution, and it may be an amendment added to this resolution, but I'm going to go ahead with the resolution. Whereas the properties are more particularly describing the attached exhibit, which includes four properties, description, said exhibit and property description being incorporated herein by reference, as if fully said out here in verbatim. Remnant partials are included in the Rockyfort Middle School site, but are not required for any school purpose and are desired by the town of Smyrna. And whereas the town of Smyrna is willing to accept said remnant properties, partials, and to keep, and to upkeep all maintenance on said remnant partials, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County that this acreage be conveyed to the town of Smyrna. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County any necessary quick claim deeds conveying the remnant partials as described and attached heretofore through the town of Smyrna, contingent on and pursuant to the approval of said quick claim deeds by the county attorney. Resolved this 14th day of November 2019. I so move.
I have a motion from Chairman McAdoo. Is there a second on the motion? And a second. Discussion? Commissioner Gooch, and then Commissioner Gurley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My recollection in property management, that it was the intent that there be a fire department or police precinct or both, and I may need to refer to the minutes, Mr. Clerk, if those are available, but I thought there was discussion also that if that intent changes, that we wanted the land revert back to us. So I would like to make an amendment that if the intent of a police precinct or a fire station changes, that the land revoke backs to us, to the county.
You move that amendment? You move the amendment? Is there a second?
I will second to that.
Second on the, okay. So now, Commissioner Gurley, you recognize the speaker on the amendment.
Yes, I would like for Commissioner Gooch to change that. The only parcel that really is in question is the 4.8-acre parcel. That's the one that's out there on the road that has some value. As you know, most people know that that particular location may be, within the next five to 10 years, another interstate interchange, at which time that property will be worth many, many times what the county paid for it. I have no problems at all, given that it's Smyrna, to build a public safety facility on, but I would hate for the county to give up something to be profited and lose potential revenue from that. So if you could amend that to the 4.8-acre parcel, that that will revert to the county. The other parcels are inconsequential, as far as the.
Well, Commissioner Gurley, you'll have to make an amendment to the amendment that we have on the floor, if.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could say this, could I change my amendment to?
I can revoke, I'll go along with that.
Okay.
That it's just the 4.8 acres designated for public safety.
That's allowable. Okay, so you amend your amendment.
Change my amendment.
You change your amendment.
I'll change my second.
And a second from Commissioner Gurley on the amendment to the motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Don, on the amendment.
Okay. I see 1.89 acres. I don't see a four-acre tract anywhere on here. Mr. Gurley, are you referring to the wasted tracks in the TVA right-of-way and those tracks to the east and north? Are you including all four tracks in your comment? My concern is that if we are talking about the value of almost five acres, that's a whole other topic. I would have a different opinion on this if we were giving away five acres on a corner of a road we just built. But instead, we're given, we're asked to collaborate with a fellow municipality, and there's a .91-acre tract on the east side and a .98 on the west, and they will be combined with another landowner who's also going to donate. With that combination, it becomes big enough for a fire hall or something more functional. So I just want to be clear that we represent the transaction accurately.
Commissioner Gurley.
I did not have that explanation. I wasn't in property management and wasn't aware of that. I have no problem going back to Commissioner Gooch's original thinking that it'd be used for public safety, period.
Back to the original amendment.
Back to, Commissioner Gooch, are you willing to?
I'm willing to do that, just the whole.
Your original amendment to the motion. Okay. And is, Commissioner Gurley, you're second on his amendment. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we're back on the amendment to the motion. Is everybody clear? Would you like to have it restated? Madam Clerk? I guess everybody's clear. Okay, all in favor?
Can I interject real quick? Hey, so I'm, from a legal perspective, okay with having that in the resolution, but I need to look at that to make sure that we can, that the restraint that we're putting in those deeds is legal. There are certain limitations that you can't have in conveyance deeds when you convey a piece of property that would put a restraint on a person's ability to do certain things. Now, this might be acceptable, so you might want to put on there that it's upon approval of the county attorney, just so I can make sure that we're good to do this and restrict their use to what you've stated, and if they don't, then it reverts back to us.
Any other questions on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Back on the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Our comments? Let's just be on the safe side, and we'll be on the board on this one, okay? If you wouldn't members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes. Motion passes.
Next is the resolution of the historic Rockville, it says Rockville School, but I'm pretty sure it's talking about the Rockville store lease agreement. And this was presented to Property Management Committee, and the society that is looking at the store wanted, I believe, item 14 eliminated. So we turned it over to the county attorney, and hopefully, the county attorney can explain what they're looking for.
Let me state this, that the resolution, as on your agenda tonight, says Rockville School lease agreement, is actually the historic Rockville Historical Society and Building Donation Agreement is what we'll be voting on. Mr. Christensen, comments?
Sure. So subsequent to this commission's approval of the agreements as drafted in August, the Historical Society requested certain changes. Those were considered by the steering committee. I went and amended the agreements to reflect those changes, but to still have in here a clause regarding the ability of the county to give a year's notice. The Historical Society today approved these agreements as amended. The prior ones that were approved by this commission in August have not been signed yet, so this is going to.
So this is going to supplant those. And it is from my understanding that the Historical Society is in agreement with them. So that's what we're asking to get approved tonight.
Is any questions concerning that change?
Need a motion.
Motion to that effect?
There was a, there was a resolution that was drafted. I'm happy to give you mine if you'd like to read it. You can, and you could so move.
This resolution, I think I've read it 15 times already on this store.
This one's out loud.
So here we go with the, I hope, the final resolution for the historic store in Rockville. Resolution, whereas there is a historic store known as the old historical Rockville Store located on Versailles Road in Rockville, Tennessee, that the Rockville Historical Society plans to restore. And whereas the old historical Rockville Store sets upon real property owned by Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners previously approved resolution on March 14, 2019, the donation of the old historical Rockville Store through the Rockville Historical Society, contingent upon entry into appropriate agreements to account for leasing the land immediately underneath the old historical Rockville Store. Indemnity obligations and limitation of use and language if use or upkeep is not maintained as deemed appropriate by Rutherford County and other matters. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners therefore approve a certain building donation agreement for the old historical Rockville Store and a certain lease agreement for the land immediately underneath the old historical Rockville Store. Resolution on August 15, 2019. And whereas certain changes to the said building donation agreement and lease agreement were thereafter requested by the Rockville Historical Society and considered by the Rutherford County Property Management Committee. And whereas the building donation agreement and lease agreement approved, approve a resolution on August 15, 2019, have not yet been executed by either party due to said request changes to the same. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County that the building donation agreement with the Rockville Historical Society for the old historical Rockville Store be amended as set forth in the Rockville Store Building Donation Agreement, attached heretofu as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length as if set forth herein verbatim. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County that the lease agreement with the Rockville Historical Society for the land immediately underneath the old historical Rockville Store be amended and as set forth in the lease agreement, attached heretofu as Exhibit 2 and incorporated herein at length as if set forth herein verbatim. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials on and and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute the said Rockville Store building donation agreement and lease agreement as amended herein and as reflected on Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, attached heretofu with the Rockville Historical Society. Resolve this the fifteenth day of August 2019 and I so move.
Chairman McAdoo makes the motion. Is there a second? And a second? Any discussion? Commissioner Reither.
Just have one where it says if use or upkeep is not maintained, who makes sure it's being maintained? It says Rutherford County. Who in Rutherford County? Is that Code Department or Pettus? Is that you? I mean, and my other question is, does it mean maintained in its current state? Because it's not very well maintained. But the main question, if Rutherford County is responsible for making sure it's being used properly and maintained properly, who does that?
I think we need a legal opinion on the definition of is.
That looks, sounds like it's directed at me. I would imagine that if there were issues that arose with the condition of the property, it would get reported to probably Planning or Codes. And in some fashion would, I would be advised or the mayor would be advised. And it would be brought back to the commission if there was any action that needed to be taken under the agreements that would be approved today.
I believe Mr. Christensen on the resolution. I think we were supposed to change the date from August to November.
That's right, on the resolution or on the agreement?
On the resolution.
Yeah, the resolution itself, the only thing that would need to be changed would, the bottom that says resolve this fifteenth day of August, it should say resolve this fourteenth day of November.
Of November.
So I'll submit that amendment, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the board, please. Please cast your vote, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, that concludes Property Management Committee report. And I'm glad that we took care of that store after two years.
Thank you for all, thank you for all your hard work, Mr. Chairman. That's one, you mark that one off your list. Next, we have Public Safety Committee, no report. Public Works and Planning Committee. Chairman Kusch.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Couple of updates and then I'm going to ask for suspension of the rules. As you know, Public Works has two extra committee meetings going on every month. One is a solid waste meeting. That's extra to the regular Public Works meeting, which we are making headway on. The other is a Select Infrastructure Group. And I'm going to give you a little bit of update on what's going on there. We have had multiple meetings, three of which have been well attended by folks that you might find hard to believe to get together in a room with us and all be on the same page. And that are real estate developers, builders, homeowner, not homeowner associations, but real estate associations, all folks in the development of property and building of homes. To have all those folks in the same room and listening to us and our needs and our problems, for them to listen and be able to chat back and forth with us about our vision has been most rewarding. And I appreciate their attendance. They most have been all three meetings and continue to come. We've had one state representative attend. We have an invitation to a person at C Task to come and do some explanation for our meeting coming up. But to give you an idea, we have pitched several ideas, many of which are still in the research phase, mainly from a legal standpoint. But some are a non-developer related, which would be the wheel tax, an increase in the wheel tax and that money be specifically set aside to an infrastructure account. And we will talk more about that in our December meeting. But we have talked about sales tax redistribution. We've talked about special assessment districts, adequate facility districts, transfer, real estate transfer fees. And of course, the last one, which we don't want, which is the reason we even have this committee, is property taxes. What we have found, which is probably no surprise to everybody, but our legislative body, our representatives in Nashville, when we, when we come at the end of the year like this and ask for stuff, when they have to have all their things in by the end of January, really now, that doesn't sit very well with them. Because things even on their end in Nashville take time. So I'm going to suggest we do what the city of Smyrna does, and they've been very successful with this, is they, they have a lobbyist and they meet with their legislative body in Nashville, representatives, constantly, several times a month. They're in constant contact. They're playing the game, they're greasing the skids. That's what we need to do. Historically, or the last five years since I've been a commissioner, every January, we sit down in this room and we meet with our representatives. And we go through questions of our wants and needs. And in about an hour and a half, we all shake hands and depart. And we see them again the following January. You don't get anything done that way. So we chatted about this, I gave an update at Steering Committee. And lo and behold, Alan McAdoo, who's, well, Chairman Harris of Steering will be giving a resolution here in a minute. But Alan McAdoo and I are on the same page in the fact that he is in agreement that we must meet our legislative body at a minimum four times a year and work the system. So they can be helping us all year long and we not just jump up and down at the end of the year and say, by golly, we need this and we need you to have this done in 30 days so you can take it and get the bill signed. So you'll hear about that resolution and I hope you support it. I ask very highly and please, please, pretty pleased that you support that. Now, we can have the Steering Committee be the representative group that does that. We could perhaps have all the committee chairman and or co-chairman be a part of that group, including the chairman pro tem. Or perhaps all 21 commissioners in December elect a quote executive legislative committee to be the spokes team to make that trip to Nashville or invite them back. It's likely we will need to go to Nashville at least four times a year. But we need to have a small group to go. We need to have a leader or a spokesperson of that group so we can get to the point, state our facts, state our needs, and then we need to keep following up. So that's how we're going to get things done. Because for us to get what we need from an infrastructure, am I, are my three minutes up yet, Mayor? Sorry, are my three minutes up?
I'll give you three more.
Okay. So for us to get what we need done on this infrastructure committee and what Public Director and Superintendent Brooks is going to allude to in just a minute, to get the funds we need from the development side and not the property tax increase, we are going to have to amend the private act. Particularly since we are a growth county, we are going to have to explain why that archaic amendment needs to be changed. We're going to have to show why we need it and what we have now is not working. That can be done, but we can't get it done in 30 days at the end of the year and say, hey, we need you to change this bill, so please do it. We're going to have, like I said, work the system, grease the skids, and play as a good team. So that being said, we are going to talk about some things in December that may be one of many tools. It will be not so much on the development side, but as a more of a user fee, but I'm going to save that for December. Now, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to bring Public Works Director, Mr. Brooks, up to talk about a challenge he has and some opinions he has that are based on this and building roads to the new school that we bought land for last year. So I've made a motion, I need a second.
Members, I have a motion to suspend the rules and a second to allow our road superintendent, Mr. Greg Brooks, to come forward. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries, Mr. Brooks. Good evening. Welcome.
Good to see everyone this evening. I just want to kind of give everyone an update as kind of where we're at on the school site, road improvements, and make a couple of points that go right along with Commissioner Kusch's speech. So before the, before the meeting started, I handed out a little letter that I wrote up. I know you can all read, but I'd like to read it out loud because I can't put emojis on the letter. So, "To the Rutherford County Commissioners, the efforts to move forward with the first round of road improvements to facilitate the opening of the new elementary school on what will, at some point, become a three-school campus is moving forward. As you are aware, currently these costs are being shouldered entirely by the Highway Department. When I was initially asked to give an opinion as to what improvements I thought would be necessary and maybe some idea of what the cost would be, I tried to give the most accurate estimate I could on such short notice with a very limited amount of information. The estimate I furnished was for material only. It was evident from the follow-up conversation that everyone understood this estimate would only be a percentage of the overall cost to complete the work. The reason the Highway Department is involved to this level is twofold. First, excuse me, first is the timeline. In an effort to have some idea as to the true cost of the property being considered, I was asked for an opinion. Had there been enough time, an engineering firm working in conjunction with the Board of Education so that all the facts, size of the schools, the exact location of the entrances and exits, the area of zoning, et cetera, could be considered and a complete estimate developed. The second reason for our involvement is also timeline. There is absolutely no way a contractor could have the level of service of these roads in question at an acceptable level by the opening date of the first school. So we stepped up and said, we'll do it. This time, we'll make every effort to be ready for the school to open on time. But we cannot continue to do these moving forward." Which brings us to my point. "It is past time for conversations about the next round of improvements for this campus as well as the other new school sites existing and proposed. I'm aware of the new infrastructure, I am aware of the new infrastructure committee and their efforts to find additional funding. I continue to be optimistic that they will be successful in those efforts. However, in my opinion, we must set aside some time to start discussions about how to assess our needs moving forward and how to achieve those needs. First, we have to establish and prioritize what our needs are. Second, we have to develop and create a plan. Third, we have to acquire whatever right of way is necessary to develop that plan, to execute that plan. And then finally, we have to send that out to bid. All that takes a lot of time. There are already other properties that have been purchased that we know school is going to be built on. We also know the Board of Education has to find additional land for even more new schools. And I think that conversation has to be on, on the, on the top of everybody's list. Or we're going to find ourselves in the same position we're in right now and that is in a vacuum, trying to get these... in a vacuum, trying to get these roads safe when the school opens. So that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any, or at least try to. We also have, uh, Mr. Jay Bradley from ELI is here tonight. He is the person, he represents the firm that has been helping me develop these plans. He was our consulting engineer that you guys, uh, agreed to hire to help our engineering department when we found ourselves in a vacuum a few years, uh, well, about a year ago, when we lost our, uh, stormwater engineer, Ms. Katie P., and then our public works engineer, uh, took another, took another job, and we were having a difficult time filling those positions. Those positions have been filled, however, the fact that we had the opportunity to work with a consultant engineer that was already on board with the county, we took advantage of that opportunity. He's here tonight. He could also answer any questions about that end of it.
Any questions?
If you don't have any questions, and, uh, don't forget, my point is, we've got to start having discussions about how to, how to make these improvements, this next round of improvements to these, to these roads that we already know about and the ones that we see coming. My opinion, the only way to do that is to hire an engineer.
Chairman Allen.
I guess that is, that is my question to you. Is there a specific ask that you have of this group tonight, or is this just for information only and laying the groundwork for a future request for funding, or?
It's really more, from my standpoint, it's more of a request for, uh, a discussion about what our needs are and how, how to achieve those needs moving forward. And I think, uh, I think, as commissioners, I think, obviously, you would need to be involved in that discussion, but I think we need to get the, uh, Board of Education and see what, what they have on their mind. Uh, they're just, it's, it's more of a, kind of a roundtable discussion to see where we, where we're at and where we need to be. There's no question about the fact we have to have more schools. No question about it. That's not something that was created by the Board of Education, that's created by the growth that we are fortunate to have in this county, in my opinion. We're fortunate to have it, but, uh, they're just trying to, they're trying to see to it that our, our children get to go to school in brick and mortar, and I think, I think that's the way it should be. Our, I think our job, and my job, is to try to make the road safe as possible, but to that end, the Highway Department historically, you know, forever, and, and by law, our responsibility is to maintain our road system. And this is, this goes beyond that, quite a bit beyond that. And we can't dedicate all of our time moving forward to building roads for schools. So we're going to have to have some help. Did I answer your question? Any more?
Chairman Kush.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'll start with a question for the mayor and our county attorney. Let's start at the top. School board purchasing new land for new schools.
Okay.
Some of that water is already under the bridge.
Correct.
Is there, here's what I want. You tell me how to get there. Before we sign a contract to purchase land, okay, or before the school board signs a contract, I guess we appropriate the funds, right? I, I want it to where, on the final checklist, that director of public works, director of planning, signs off that they've reviewed the property, they've reviewed the infrastructure, and they've had a chance to review and comment, and once they've signed off, then the contract can move forward. Because we got in a bind, school board did their due diligence, they went out and found property, but then couldn't get there safely, and then we are stuck at the last minute trying to figure out how to build roads out there, and he graciously stood up and said, "We think our department can do it," although his department is not supposed to be doing that. So here's what, this is what I want going forward, that somebody that represents us with an knowledge of infrastructure has to sign off that says, "Here's what's going to need to happen, it's going to cost us X amount," because he, he basically put all this together in about 48 hours, which was totally unfair, totally unfair. So, uh, this is what I want, Nick and the mayor. I want some, at the end of the day, when they check everything for sinkholes, for, you name it, brown, you know, hazardous waste buried on site, when they go through all their big checklist of property, I want Public Works Director and Planning Director to have signed off on it before anybody writes any checks. Because I want him to say, "Hey, all 21 of us, by the way, it's going to cost you $10 million to build roads to get there, or it's only going to cost a million dollars. And then are we going to put that in the site package plans to bid, to bid out?" I mean, this is, that, that's the first thing, okay? So I guess my next question is for Jay Bradley and you. Are we far enough along in Phase Two, I guess maybe this is, for the new, the next phase? Do we have a budget?
Haven't even started on Phase Two. We're, we're still trying to execute Phase One. So there, there hasn't even been a discussion about the second round of improvements.
Have you got right-of-way, have you acquired any right-of-way yet?
We have started that process. That, as you are, are aware, that, that's a very lengthy, involved process that takes a lot of time and money, but we've started the process. We're, we are far enough along that we have, a couple of the appraisals have started to come back in. We still have to do the title searches and that kind of thing, but we've turned over some different groups of property to our appraiser and to our attorney that's doing our title searches.
Catch 22. The school board is trying to do the campus construction. Idea, great idea, but you need a lot of land for that. Well, there's not a whole lot of big parcels of land left until you, unless you go outside of the county. I mean, you're starting, you're starting to push out there, right? Well, land's a little cheaper out there, too. So the school board's buying this big chunks of land and thinking, "Oh, man, we're getting a good deal." Land's cheap out there. So they think they're helping us. But in reality, we have to pay for the infrastructure to get out there. So they buy nice, I mean, it's not cheap, nothing's cheap, but in relevant terms, they're going out there to buy big sections of campus land at a lower price because it's out there, but whatever they're saving, we're tripling up on trying to build the infrastructure to get out there. So that's the catch 22. The left hand's not talking to the right hand, and that's a problem. That's, and we're getting that fixed, sort of, kind of, we're getting that fixed.
The fact that we're having this discussion means that we're, we are ahead of where we were. But there's, it, it's never just black and white, it's always a little gray, and regardless of where these sites are purchased, they're going to come with, with a fair amount of, of problems. I mean, if you build them on the side of a state highway, then you're causing, you know, you've got a good road, but you're causing congestion on, on a road that was intended to move people. If you build them out in the country like this one is, then the roads are inadequate. So it's never, it's never, uh, just a, a clear cut, "This is the perfect location." There will always be problems that have to be overcome, and it will always be expensive, no, no question about it. But as long as there is a need, then we have to have a, a discussion. Another difficult part is anytime, regardless of whether it's, you know, the county buying property, Board of Education, or, or an individual buying property, uh, large deals like that are complex, as you all know, and there has to be a certain amount of, of confidentiality to make all that happen, because once that ball starts rolling, if, if there's too much information put out, it can cause a lot of things to go wrong. So you have to overcome that somehow as well. You know, I've, I've never done a deal of any size that didn't have a confidentiality agreement, and so when you start checking all the boxes, that's just more people that know about it that could convolute the, the topic a little bit. I, I don't know what all the answers are. I just know that we have to start making these road improvements now. We have to start talking about them now, we have to get other people involved, we have to get contracting, engineering, uh, firms involved and, and seeing what, what kind, you know, we, we're, we're talking about, um, a traffic study, and that's great. I mean, that's, that's what we're going to have to have for each and every one of these, we're going to have to have a traffic study. What, what we feel like, these areas, what, what, what's the amount of traffic, average daily trips there now? What's it going to be after the school's built? What's it going to be five years after the school built, school is built, and all the development happens? So each one of them is really going to have to come with its own traffic study to have an accurate, uh, depiction of what, of what the cost will be to get, to get to where it should be. Not trying to make it harder, I just, I just need everybody to be thinking about it like I am. If I get two more people to think about it like I am, I'm 66% ahead of where I am right now. So, there we go. So I, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know. I know the answers, but we've got to start asking the questions and looking for the answers together.
Commissioner Phillips.
Sometimes the way this county has progressed over the last 30, 35 years, it, it's too much for my small, small brain to comprehend. But we had a discussion similar to this when we talked about purchasing that Christiana property. And to me, it's not as complicated as, as, in my brain, it's not as complicated as it is in some others. And to me, the infrastructure to get to that property has to be considered when we buy that property. We do not buy the property unless the infrastructure is part of the cost of that. Might cost, let's just say, a million dollars to buy this piece of property, and if it doesn't cost hardly anything, if it's on Highway 231, probably the infrastructure to get to is going to be minimal, maybe not hardly anything. But if it's on a country road, it might double or triple the cost of that property just for us to build the infrastructure. So in my simple mind, when we go to buy this property, and I, I'm not saying that I'm the only one that voted no on buying that Christiana property, but I voted no on buying that Christiana property because I did not know what the final cost was. And I said then, and I'm saying it again now, "I'll never approve the purchase of a piece of property unless I know what these costs are." And that's where he becomes involved and gives us some estimate. I don't care if it's a rough estimate, I just want some type of estimate. If the piece of property costs a million bucks, and that's the school board's responsibility, and they say that's where that ends, I say it's not. I say that the infrastructure, and that's more than just roads, but the infrastructure for us to get to that piece of property has to be considered before we agree to buy, buy it. If it's a bargain at a million bucks, I, I think that's great, but if the infrastructure costs us four million bucks to get to it, is that the piece of property we want to be buying? I say that I, as a commissioner, will never vote yes on buying a piece of property unless I know what that cost is. And trying to make things simple, that is as simple an approach as I know how to, how to get to it. I'm not sure it's his responsibility to build these schools. I think it's part of the building process for that school itself, and that's an outside contractor. That's where I say we need to know what that, part of that cost is. It's part of the cost of building that school and buying that property.
Absolutely, and, and to, you know, to take that a little further, Ms. Allen made a good point sometime during all this conversation earlier, earlier. We know these are coming, we know these schools are coming. We, we cannot wait until the last minute to purchase these properties. We know they're coming, so if we have time to consider them, then we have time to, to estimate what those costs are going to be. I think somehow we've got to get a little further out in front of this thing.
Commissioner Rother.
Couldn't agree more with Commissioner Kush and Commissioner Phillips.
For me?
And I'm, I'm going to get to you in just a second. My wife will ask me if she can buy something. Well, I don't say yes, I say, "How much is it?" So I got to know how much it is, too. But I was just sitting here thinking, and I know, you know, it's my, what, 14th month or something, being a commissioner, 16th, or, 13th maybe, you know your job, and I'm going to make an assumption here, better than anybody in this room. You certainly know it better than me. And I think about Doug Demossi, Mike Hughes, they know their jobs better than anybody in here. And so there's a group of people that's been put in a pinch because you find out things at the last minute, and then it's rush, rush, rush. I would suggest, what I would like to see, or, or maybe something I add to, or whatever, is that you come up with, before the school board buys a piece of property, if they're looking at a piece of property, what do you need in writing? Here are all the things I'm going to need to look at, I'm going to need these plans, I'm going to need this, this, and this. Planning Director, Engineering Director, they do the same thing. Everybody that's involved in it does the same thing, so that, going back to Commissioner Kush's comments, everybody knows what you need and can check off those boxes, but that needs to come from you and, and Mr. Hughes, um, Mr. Demossi, because you know, you're, you know what you need better than we do, you better than I do, anyway. So you come up with those checklists, and that be a part of the process upfront, and, and when you come up with what you need, give a lead time. I'm going to need this three months before we start anything, or I'm going to need it six months before we start anything. That way, they can be involved, everybody knows whatever, what you need, what they need, you can go visit, you can do the research, you can, you can, we can get the information. But you know what you need, and so does Doug and Mike, and, I mean, I, I think everybody in this room wants to help you, but I don't know of anybody in this room that can sit here and tell you what all, we're not going to, I couldn't come to you and say, "Well, here's what you need."
Right.
You say what you need, and, and hopefully, we can work that out in some plan or process that you get what you need when you need it to make this work and be a lot more efficient than what we're doing now. Just my thoughts.
Commissioner Phillips.
One quick follow-up on that. I, I need to, I need to ask the commissioner how he gets his wife to ask him for permission to buy something. If, if there's a way you could explain that to me, it doesn't have to be during, during this meeting, but if there is a way you can explain that to me, I don't find out until I get the bill. And, and our marriage has survived, but, Michael, if there's any way you can explain that to me, where I can explain it to my wife, I'll, uh...
And soon, because we're all staring at Christmas.
After, after, no, it's going to be quick. After, after 23 marriage, after 23 years of marriage, she knows I cannot tell her no. So she just asks no, and I'm going to say yes.
I think we need to get back on the subject for some people... I think we need to get back on the subject before some people get in trouble while they go home, if they're watching.
Those needs you speak of can only be determined after we have enough information. We being myself, our county engineer, we have to know what we're trying to prepare for. We don't even know what we're preparing for. We're talking about school. We're talking about three schools, you know, what's the timeline? And, you know, to be blunt, I can only speak for myself, and I'm not complaining. I raised my hand up to do this. But I can't dedicate all my time to it. I'm going to have to have additional outside help. And I feel confident that Mr. Hughes would agree that he can only dedicate a certain amount of time to this without something else suffering. So I think it's going to take some outside consulting as well. An initial, just an initial little follow-up to your point.
Other comments? Questions? Commissioner Cook.
The years I've been on county commission, I have seen this county change big time. And not a department in this county can withhold its own without changes. And I have seen the property for school boards go up and up, rent goes up and up, taxes on our houses go up and up. There's going to have to be some changes. There's going to have to have some committees to work some of these things out. And I'm willing for this to go back to a committee. Let's see if we can get some things worked out, see if we can get some committees to work on this. And then when we overbuy for the school board, we need to sell off that it's not being used. We need to keep some for growth, but we need to sell that that we don't need. And I know Laverne has some that they don't need. So I agree with you. I think this committee, this county commission will agree with you, because there's not a one of us that hadn't added to our house or bought another house.
I don't want to leave you with the impression that I feel like we're not doing anything. You know, just recently, you approved some money to start the traffic study. That, you know, that's going to help. No question about that. That's going to help. So there are things, there are things going on. We have that select infrastructure committee that's looking for ways to, for, you know, to find some funding, to set some funding aside to pay for some of this stuff. But, so I don't want to, I don't want to be, you know, grim about the whole thing. I just know that we have to start having the conversation frequently.
I'll keep this very short. Some of our neighboring counties who are under different acts than we are have school special assessment zones, which I'm sure Mr. Brooks wished we had in play. What that basically means is you define a school zone that needs special funding because the roads are inadequate. That zone of new homes and existing homes are assessed a fee. So new roofs are paid, are paying a higher fee. Existing homes pay a little fee, a monthly fee. And that is paid until that project is paid for, and then that assessment falls off the books. Now you might wonder, well, why are we charging existing homes a little bit? Well, because those new roads in front of those homes are benefiting from all those new road improvements, from a safety standpoint, from congestion standpoint.
Hopefully from a property value standpoint as well.
So a lot of counties already have that in play. It's much like, I often reference the, Murfreesboro has sewer assessments. You build all these houses, and the sewer can't handle it, so they have to build a big trunk line sewer. Well, everybody pays for that until the sewer line's paid for, and then it falls off the books. So that's one of the tools our sick committee is looking at, but we also are going to need our representatives to change some powers acts for us to allow us to put some of that in play. So a lot of ways to skin the cat, but we're going to have to have our representatives change the laws for allow us to do that.
Any other questions? Mr. Brooks, thank you, Mr. Brooks. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Off the topic.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Joe Frank Jernigan right here. We were recently asked at the highway department to name a bridge out in his neighborhood for him, and that happened recently on Murray Kittle Road. So the bridge has been named in honor of Mr. Jernigan, who has served this county, in my opinion, well for many, many years. I know he's been a commissioner for a long time, and he has been an active and very valuable part of the highway department for many years. And I just wanted to make you guys aware that that has happened, and I want to thank him publicly for his service.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chairman Kush, you had asked the question to myself and to our attorney. I'm not, I'm very encouraged about the discussion. I'm encouraged about what I've heard here tonight. We're moving in the right direction. Thank you for your subcommittee's work. You know, back in the early 90s, for those members who were on this commission back in the early 90s, this problem's been going on for a long time. You know, for those who were on here back in the early 90s, when we built Stuart's Borough, I remember Commissioner Anthony Johnson, after we built the school, his students had, there were no sidewalks on Old Nashville Highway, and they were walking in a ditch to get to the school, which was so dangerous. And then we decided to widen the road right in front of the entrance to the school and put in a caution light to get people to slow down. But that was after the fact. And so, you know, commissioners come and go, county mayors come and go, and we thought that we had this back in the 90s, this agreement, but somehow it had disappeared. And now we're behind, it's hard for us to try to catch up. And you were exactly right. Those big tracks are gone. Blackman was the first campus school to put all three schools on there, and it saved us money by putting the infrastructure into all three schools on one farm. They're about gone. So now, in the future, they're going to be pieced. But I think the lines of communication, I think all of us as a team, working with planning, working with the Department of Education, working with this commission, we're all going to have to be focused on how can we save the most amount of money? And still, at the same time, provide for the services for all those new folks that are moving here. So I'm encouraged about the, about the direction we're going. You're on the right track, you and your committee and what you're doing. You know, if we were, we're the funding board. The school board says we've got to put a school in. We're the funding board, correct, Nick? And if we don't fund it, that's the only thing that we have to hold them with, and if we don't fund it, things sue us. And we've gone down that road with jails in the past. But I think opening those lines of communication, everybody working together, I think we can be successful in making sure that we can put this infrastructure in. And I'm just, I was amazed that Mr. Brooks was willing to step up and tackle this way beyond what he was ever, he and his department and board were elected to do, that they're really saving our bacon on these schools out in Christiana at this point in time. But if we work together in the future and do proper planning, I think we'll be successful. And thank you for your committee's work.
Next, we have steering committee and government affairs, resolution to adopt tobacco and vaping policy. Chairman?
Counselor.
I'm sorry?
Counselor.
Yeah. Without objection, we'll come back into order. Come back out of suspending the rules. Chairman Craig, you're recognized.
All right. The first resolution I have is that we are updating our policy, and we are, what we're doing is we're taking, we're putting vaping and electric cigarettes, and we're adding them in there as for things that we prohibit. So whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners desires to add section general information policy, smoking, vaping, and tobacco usage policy number 217 to the Rutherford County employee handbooks, and whereas the Rutherford County Government Employee Handbook should be amended to include tobacco and vaping policy, and whereas the proposed addition provides greater detail to the Rutherford County employees. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the tobacco and vaping policy attached hereto as exhibit one and incorporated herein as if set forth verbatim be and hereby is adopted and approved, resolved this 14th day of November 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Questions? Commissioner Gerling.
I would just like to make a comment that exhibit one is not on our iPads, therefore we don't have knowledge of what exhibit one is.
Rutherford, this is the exhibit. I'll read it to you. Is that all right? Okay. Rutherford County respects the rights of non-smokers and smokers alike. The use of smoking or tobacco-related products, including but not limited to pre- or hand-rolled cigarettes, e-cigarettes, or other vaping devices. Cigars, pipes, and smokeless tobacco are prohibited inside any county facility or vehicle, whether owned or leased. The use of smoking or tobacco-related products will only be allowed in designated areas outside any county-owned and operated facility, but not within 25 feet of an entrance or designated area. The Tennessee Emergency Medical Services Board adopted on September 24th, 2014, that no smoking or vaping may occur within, excuse me, in visitors, that Rutherford County maintains a smoke and tobacco-free environment. The facilities director will designate areas outside the building where the use of smoke or tobacco-related products will be allowed. This policy relates to all work areas at all times, including before and after normal working hours, as well as weekend and holidays.
Commissioner? Chairman.
I got this on. Is this including any tobacco products, whether it's smoking, smoking related, including chewing, smoking, vaping?
Yes, sir. All tobacco use. Yes, sir.
Questions? Commissioner Kush.
I really thought I was going to sail through this. I thought I was going to sail through this.
I guess not, Commissioner. Why are we including vaping?
Well, we've had some complaints, and we feel that vaping is, as you understand, there's been a lot of things of health concerns coming up with vaping. But the biggest reason is because a lot of people don't like the smoke, don't like it being around them, so we felt that it was best to add this. It's mainly the smoke.
Vape is not smoke.
Well, you know what I mean when they blow it out?
They don't want to see it.
They don't want to see it.
Okay. I can remember when I worked in an office building, and it was, people smoked in the office building with no concerns. And studies was done that the secondhand smoke was harmful to people around. So we slowly got rid of smoking in buildings and smoking in public and so forth and so on, and rightly so. And I don't know how many people have successfully quit smoking because of vaping, but I'm sure it's hundreds of thousands. And I'm concerned that we're taking a tool or a method that can successfully help someone stop smoking, because someone doesn't want to see vape. There's no studies to indicate or any suggestion that the mist or the vape, the moisture that comes is harmful to anything, it just disappears. And the worst that it smells, you think someone's eating cotton candy. And so we're taking this method away because we don't want to see it. Now, as far as the health concerns, people have been vaping and using e-cig for decades. And all of a sudden, one day, someone dies, and people are getting sick. The only link to that is vitamin E oil and the THC that people are putting in it, and it's basically young people. And that's the only thing, the connection, all of a sudden, after decades of vaping, here goes, someone got sick, and it's because of that. Most people, and a lot of times, it's off the streets. And I guess my concern is we're eliminating a method to help people quit smoking because people don't just want to see the vape. And I don't think that's a good reason to eliminate vaping.
Well, Commissioner Kush...
Now, if it could be a situation where it could be eliminated, I'm sorry, in offices, because people may not want to smell the cotton candy, but there's places that people can go, and you just never know, they're vaping to get that little quick, to help them quit smoking. And that's just my concern.
Well, one of the things that Rutherford County does is we offer free nicotine patches, it's any other way that we can help you quit smoking. We offer those things. That's why nicotine is not included in the wording, because we want people who will be able to, you know, have patches and all that stuff.
So if somebody puts a patch on their arm, they wear a short-sleeve shirt, someone gets offended, is that point where we ban it?
They have not got to that point, no, sir.
And I think this will help us get to that point if we're going to eliminate vaping, because someone doesn't want to see vape. And it can be that they go outside or something. But to eliminate a whole program that can help people quit smoking successfully because we just don't want to see the vape, with all due respect, I'm not saying it's you, that's ridiculous.
Ms. Chairman, consulting with our attorney, I believe that they can still vape. Is that correct? Designated area?
Sorry, fill in the blanks for me if you need to, but I think where the policy is written, it just lumps into the things that were already prohibited within county buildings and includes vaping with that. An employee can still vape, but it has to be in a designated area that is outside of the building and is per the ambulance regulations, no closer than 25 feet. Ten, ten...
Move.
Spend the rules.
I need you to move the spend the rules. Is there a motion to spend the rules? Motion and a second, spend the rules to allow our HR director to speak. Tanya, you're recognized.
It doesn't eliminate the vaping. It adds that in to the policy. We already had a smoking policy in the county. It's just adding in the vaping and the e-cigarettes. When the state enacted this several years ago about no smoking on their state properties and the Health, Department of Health issued that, the county was already doing no smoking within 25 feet of a door that entered a building, just like with the restaurants and those type things. This was just to add in the vaping and e-cigarettes because we didn't already have that in our policy. The other thing was that it was to be done off the clock. Instead of people smoking on the clock, they would do that off the clock. So those are the only things added. They can still smoke vape, dip chew, as long as it's not inside the building, inside a car, or inside an ambulance.
Well, I get that, the smoking part, because that's toxic. But why are we adding vaping?
Most of the other entities do add e-cigarettes and vaping. Many of them have already done that a long time ago. The e-cigarettes, the state put that in for the ambulances, within 10 feet of an ambulance so that it wouldn't go back into it. So we're just really bringing our policies up to what other people have already done.
And I get, you know, an ambulance, you've got someone, you know, but if someone goes to the restroom, takes a few quick puffs, it bothers no one. It affects no one. And I guess that's my issue, is it affects no one, and we're going to ban it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Stevenson? Questions? Okay. We'll come back out of recess, back in session. Chairman, questions on the resolution?
to the restroom, take a few quick puffs, it bothers no one. It affects no one. And I guess that's my issue, is it affects no one. And we're gonna ban it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Stevenson? Questions? Okay. We'll come back out of recess, back in session. Chairman, questions on the resolution? We have a motion and a second. And we'll go with a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Commissioner Kusch. All right. The second thing is, where the Steering Committee feels that we're not getting enough time with our legislators, there's really not a whole lot I can say that Mike Kusch hadn't said. So, I'm gonna read this resolution. Whereas Rutherford County has experienced tremendous growth resulting in the need for guidance, cooperation, and support from its state's legislators, delegation, and whereas the Rutherford County Steering Committee believes quarterly meetings with its state legislative delegation would be beneficial and productive. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby respectfully request the attendance of any of its available state legislator delegates at quarterly meetings at 4:30 prior to the regularly scheduled Steering Committee meetings in April, July, and October, in addition to the annual meeting with the delegation in January of each year, resolved this 14th day of November 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second by Chairman McAdoo. Questions, discussions? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chairman. Next, we have statements and announcements. Ham breakfast must be coming up. All right. Chairman P.
Yes, there is a ham breakfast at Kittl, scheduled this Saturday, the 16th, between 6:00 AM and 10:00. Would invite everyone to come out. Thank you.
Okay.
Can we vape at the ham breakfast?
Chairman Reed, well, it is a fire hall, that might put you out. Chairman Reed.
If you missed your chance for a turkey or a ham at last Saturday's turkey shoot out of Rockville, there's gonna be one at Iggleville. The Iggleville Lions Club is having a turkey shoot Saturday morning, beginning around 8:30, near Sandy's Market, fairly close to Highway 99 and 41A. Invite you to come on out and take your chance at shooting a shotgun, to win yourself a turkey, a ham, or a big slab of bacon, or even a pocket knife. So, we invite you to come on out.
And a pocket knife. Other statements and announcements? Commissioner Irvin. 12:30 tomorrow. 12:30 tomorrow. Other statements and announcements? Chairman Allen.
Actually, I have two announcements. The first one is, Health and Education would typically meet on Tuesday, November 26, but we have decided that we're going to visit Community Care. And so, we have rescheduled that visit to be more accommodating to their schedule. So, it's a different day, a different time, and a different place. So, if you're coming to Health and Ed for the November meeting, it will be on Wednesday, December the 4th, at Community Care. So, everybody, of course, is welcome to come to that. And then the second thing is, the Smyrna Christmas Parade is going to be on December the 1st at 2:00 PM. You have until November 27th to sign up. And if you're interested in having a float or participating, you can contact Jill Strange at Town of Smyrna.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cook.
Speaking of Community Care, and us having our meeting out there, we're gonna have the Christmas trees up that you can bid on. So, it's a silent bid, and they're very beautiful. Y'all come.
And the money goes back to the nursery, or to the Community Care? Yeah, but the proceeds, does it go to the nursery, or back to the Community Care? Okay. Well, anyway, it stays in the building. Stays in the building if you buy a tree. Any other statements and announcements? I'll just put a plug in from M-Tissue. M-Tissue's home game, it is a veterans' home game, 3:30, they're playing rice here. And so, it's always a big celebration to honor our veterans at the ballgame on Saturday. Any other statements and announcements? Happy Thanksgiving. Oh, yeah. Well, I guess, happy Thanksgiving, absolutely. It's not, I'm not ready to eat turkey yet. But I guess we won't come back, and our next one will be past Thanksgiving. So, happy Thanksgiving to all. Yeah, and that's okay, Rick. Thank you for keeping me on the ball. So, any other business to come before the body tonight, for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn. Or adjourn.